Evening. It's 5:30 on February 16th. And I'm calling to order the Joint City Council and HRA work session. And this is a virtual meeting held via WebEx. So first, I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Stark for the staff report. Oh, and before we start that, I do want to say I've kind of looked at what we have on the agenda and parceled all the time, so we don't get bogged down at the first few topics and don't get to the ones at the end. So if I start like saying it's time to move on, that's the reason. It's not that I'm trying to cut anybody off. I want to make sure we get through the entire agenda. So Executive Director Stark.
Thank you, Chair Supple. And we do have a full agenda, so I'm not going to give much in the way of introductory comments. You're all familiar with the Inclusionary Housing Policy as a tool for us to continue to encourage the construction of affordable housing in Richfield. You know, we, it's a work in progress. We approved it, I believe, in 2000. And we are kind of revisiting some points in there as time has gone by. So with that, I'm going to actually turn it over to Housing and Redevelopment Manager Julie Urban. And Ms. Urban is going to take you through the process.
All right, and I think what I'll do is just share the PowerPoint, which is slightly different from the version that was attached to your staff report. I have added a couple of things on request and had some surveys over the weekend. I wanted to give you some feedback from that and then also found an error in there. So I apologize for the error. So sorry. There we go. So what I'm going to do is, I've got just a brief background that will look at some data and sort of what the Inclusionary Housing Policy has accomplished to date. And then we're going to go through the current policy, discuss some goals and some feedback we've received, some of the issues and challenges, and staff recommendations, all relating to it. It ends up being about eight items that we're going to take a look at. So that's part of why the schedule to keep us moving, so we can at least touch on each of the eight items. And then I'll just at the end, give you a little bit more info on some of the feedback we've been receiving. I know that you all received direct emails from members of the community housing team. But I also have some other feedback I can share. And then we'll talk about how you want to move forward. So just for background here, just to provide some data, and we have talked about some data. And it was actually at a work session about a year ago that I had given you some sheets with some background information of helpful data. And I can certainly send you a copy of that again, if that would be helpful. But I do have some updated numbers from the 2019 American Community Survey. And median rent right now is about $1,079. And that's an increase of about 12% since 2017. Median rent or household income, sorry, this is still the 2018 figure, is about $37,595. Our number of cost burden renters is at 42%, which is actually a slight decrease from the year prior to the ad, but still not a good number to have that many people cost burden. And just to note too, that for folks earning less than $20,000, that percentage who are cost burden is over 90%. So when we talk about that $20,000 income is more or less what the 30% AMI is for a single person. So just to keep that in mind. And I didn't bring the actual numbers, but just, we have known this for many years, that Richfield has a high proportion of one-bedroom apartments and just a very, very small number of three-bedroom rental units. Really where we get our larger rental units currently is through single-family rentals, which they certainly aren't all three-bedroom units. But you know, we have 600 to 700 single-family homes that are rentals. And then just the current number of, the percentage of our apartments that are considered NOAA, again, according to the American Community Survey, is about 67%. So as John said, we approved the formal policy in October of 2018. You approved it, I should say. But we have had an informal policy since around 2000. And basically, in a nutshell, the policy requires that 20% of units for projects receiving financial assistance from the city or HRA must be affordable at 60% of the area median income, or the project must make up that's equal to 15% of the tax increment. And then that amount is paid into our Housing and Redevelopment Fund. So there are also some requirements for homeownership, and I'm just not going to talk much about those, if at all, tonight, because that hasn't really been the focus of the revisions that we've talked about. So I just, again, trying to focus our efforts and keep us moving forward. I'm just, I'm not going to, I'm not going to bring that into the conversation at this point. So here's a reminder of our progress to date. So in terms of 50% of the area median income units, we have either recently constructed, or this goes back to 2012, constructed or have approved 55 new units, and we've preserved 51 units. And most of those new units have been either efficiency or one-bedrooms. But the preservation has included some two-bedroom units. So the 60% AMI that are either recently constructed or planned, there are 25 of those units. And as you know, one of the most recent approved projects, Link 65, there are some two-bedrooms in that unit count. So it's a total of 80 units, new units, and 51 preserved units. And then we've also just very informally managed to get 3 ADA accessible units, and they're one and two-bedroom. And I would say, in the case of, just point out, in the case of the Henley 2, we required one unit, but they ended up making both of their type A units ADA accessible. And then we've also collected an estimated payment in lieu from these projects or other projects of about $2.1 million. So the first topic or area that we have discussed is level of affordability. And our current policy, as I said, is 20% at 60% of the area median income. But I think a goal that I have heard from many of you, a goal that Metropolitan Council and other regional folks have asked is to encourage even deeper affordability. And that was a lot of the feedback that I've received is, you know, affordable housing is really not affordable enough. 60% of the area median income is not very affordable for Richfield. Support services, in some cases, people say, well, we should have more 30% AMI units, and some of that needs support services. But then others say, we don't need support service, we just need 30% AMI units. One very specific, or some, several very specific comments were that we should require 5% of all units to be affordable at 30% of the AMI. You know, and we've talked about that in the past at the last work session or two work sessions ago, I'm not sure now what. But one of the issues of those 30% AMI units is that they are very expensive to create. And the outside resources are very scarce, and they're restrictive. I put out a survey on sort of what are some priorities that people see. And I put in the survey, you know, is supportive housing for people with disabilities and leaving shelters a high priority? And someone said, you can't lump those two together. The reason I lumped them together is that the outside funding sources lump them together. So again, that's where that restrictive comes in from those resources. You know, and then again, that issue of being focused on supportive housing for 30% AMI is really where the outside resources are focused. There just, there aren't resources out there for 30% AMI, just general population rents. So you know, and just to point out, all cities are struggling with this. You know, and as you know, our tool, our primary tool is tax increment financing, and it doesn't encourage 30% units. It, a housing district, a housing TIF district requires 20% of units at 50% of AMI, which is part of how we've gotten those 50 or so 50% AMI units. And you know, we worked a little bit last year on some legislation that would perhaps allow for a recognition of 30% AMI units in a housing TIF district, and the pandemic hit, and all that kind of legislation just, you know, fell to the wayside. So just a couple other miscellaneous points, I guess, that I have in my notes is just a reminder that the Met Council does establish sort of what they see as each community's share of different levels of housing. And they see our share of 30% AMI units to be 66 units over the next 10 years. So and I did, I have talked about the numbers, I think, last time. But I could just point out that so, the Chamberlain offers an example. So they currently efficiencies at 50% of the AMI. And it would be $60,000 per unit to have provided those same efficiencies at 30% of the AMI. So again, there's significant costs there. So at this point, this is the chart and the breakdown that we had, as staff, had suggested last time to allow, if a project were to go deeper, to then allow them to provide fewer units. And I guess we would stick by that same recommendation. Those figures are based in part, what, St. Louis Park and Bloomington use? And then also, it was pretty consistent with my look at some of our current projects and looking at the numbers to see, like the Chamberlain, you know, what is that additional cost to go deeper? So that's kind of where we're at. I guess the other thing to point out is what staff is doing. And we've talked about this before, the Inclusionary Housing Policy is one tool in our toolbox. And it's a tool that works best in a strong housing market, which, you know, I think we believe we still are in, so we can still benefit from using this tool. But we are working this year on legislation that would free up some of our pooled TIF and allow us to put it in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund and then follow the rules of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The way the pooled TIF works right now is if it comes out of a redevelopment district, then it has to meet redevelopment district requirements, which are to have properties that are substandard. So it really limits us to how we can use that. If we were to free that up, if we are successful, then potentially we have some resources locally to get at that 30%. But you know, absent those resources, this one is going to continue to be a challenge. It also just comes up regularly in meetings I have with peer cities and other staff. And you know, so we're all trying to look for ways to get at those 30% units. So I don't know if people have questions or comments at this point on this item?
So I can see everybody except for Commissioner Brice Daniels and Councilmember Troutman. So if they'd like to speak, you just pop your name in the chat box. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this issue? All right, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify the, what Julie was saying about the 30% units in a housing redevelopment district. Did I understand that there's no subsidy available or that we can't subsidize it anymore than we would 50% AMI units?
Right, we couldn't do any more than, they wouldn't, they wouldn't get credit. They'd have to do 20% at 30, or some combination thereof, but.
Okay, thanks. And just like, in general, how much does it have? Like, can you give some dollar amount of like, how much per unit does, of subsidy is required to make a 30% unit cap? And I realize it varies from project to project, but I have like no ballpark on how much that costs.
So with the Chamberlain example, it was $60,000 to get to that. And then actually, I think they did it for the enclave. So it depends on the size, right? And efficiency is cheaper, although 60 is still a lot. But so for the enclave to have provided those two-bedroom units that they're providing at 30% would be $120,000 a unit.
Okay, thanks.
So, you know, another thing to point out too, if, if the 30% units are supportive housing units, you know, in need of support services, as staff, I don't know that we see market rate developers as the correct folks to be providing that. So it's just another thing to keep in mind.
Oh, go ahead. To follow up on Commissioner Hayford O'Leary's question, when you say 120,000, is that the initial price tag when you're developing them? Or is that per year?
That's how, so I worked with the developers of the Chamberlain to kind of come up with a formula. So we looked at the difference in rent between a market rate versus a 30%, something that would be affordable at 30%. And then you apply a rate of return factor. And I think I used 7%, but even at 5 or 6%, it comes out similarly. So that's sort of the life of the performa cost of that unit. That's sort of what they would seek from us or some outside source in order to make the project work.
All right, are there other questions or comments? Councilmember Whalen?
Just to clarify, as I was getting more emails from the public and realizing it seems like some had seen this slide and taken this to mean like row one and row two and row three, and just want to clarify, I'm like 99% certain this is an or. And so I, I do have some, I recognize the costs. I think this continues to highlight the need to keep advocating at the state level for, yes, more flexibility in funding, but also frankly, just more funding. But, and so that is, that is a thing. But recognizing that I, having a full development and only 5% of the units have any level of income restriction feels very small to me. And I'm also, I know this is kind of, starting from the place of where the Inclusionary Housing Policy has been, I talked a bit with staff about the fact that the Housing Redevelopment District already requires 20% at 50% of AMI or 40% at 60% of AMI. And so I, I think this would be an improvement. I think this would be great to get some more deeply affordable units. I do, I would be open to, if other policymakers are open to maybe bumping each of these numbers up by 5%. I don't, I don't know how the costs work for that. But to only get 5% of units with any level of income restriction and affordability feels very small to me.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Chair Supple. I just had a question for staff with regards to the Met Council goals. Was it 66 units? And I just wondered how close or how on track we are to meet or exceed that goal right now?
Our best option right now is 6501 Penn, where we're going to try to go in for tax credits and do income averaging, where we'll have some higher units at 70 to 80% AMI in order to pay for some 30% units. And then also accepting those supportive housing restrictions that come from DHS and Minnesota Housing in order to get at some of those 30% units. But that's sort of our best chance at this point.
And.
Go ahead.
Sorry. And so if we were to do that, would we meet those goals then, or?
No, it would be maybe 10 units. Yeah, so we've got a ways to go, but every city is saying.
I'm going to clarify that, thanks.
Yep.
We've got about two minutes left, Executive Director Stark. And then if there's anyone else that wants to speak.
Yep, just really clear to clarify. And it's not that the Met Council goals should be necessarily our litmus test, but that is a test. And Julie, so the 66 units that the Met Council would like us to provide of 30% AMI, over what timeframe is that?
That's the 10-year period of the plan, is my understanding, although they revisit those goals sometimes, so.
Right, so if we were to do, if we were to do seven units a year at 30% consistently for 10 years, we would meet the goal?
Yes, exactly. But thank you for pointing out, yeah, that, I just throw that out there as that's one measure to look at. I mean, the pretty strong community feedback was that, you know, we need more of, more deeply affordable units. So I think, you know, if the 66 get us to meet our needs, I don't, I don't pretend that that is the case.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? I can't see Commissioners Sandal, so just speak up if you want to say something. The pictures keep rotating on here, so it's hard to see where people are. All right, so I'm not hearing that. I would say that I also, I think when we're looking at the affordability, we need to link it with the accessibility.
Cheers.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Sandal was trying to speak, but was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I would appreciate it, just because I don't walk around looking for signs that have a name on them, because they don't. As we talk about different units and locations, could you locate them on, on the street names as well as saying Chamberlain? That would be helpful for me.
Sure, so the, sorry, the Chamberlain is what's located south of Target and Home Depot on Richfield Parkway and 66th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Troutman. I didn't see that in the chat box. Um, I was going to add that I think that we need to make sure the accessibility and the affordability are linked, and so we can kind of get more for our money that way, because there's a need for the deeply affordable, but there's also a need for that accessibility. So if we can be creative and find ways to combine that, that would be awesome. Is there anything else anyone wants to add? All right, then we'll move on to the conversation about larger units.
Right, so currently, our policy does not encourage larger units. And our goal is to create more of those affordable and larger units. The feedback we got is just there's a high need for larger units. There's really a shortage of rental housing that's large enough for families. And one of the listening sessions I did with some folks, you know, they just, one woman talked about, you know, it was fine to have, to be in this, I don't remember if she was in a one-bedroom or two-bedroom with small children, but then they became teenagers. And, and she had a boy and a girl. And so they took the bedrooms and she lives in the living room. So just really, and then her solution was to rent half of a duplex. She, so she has space now, but those are harder to come by. And so again, the issue with bedroom size is just, it's costs. It costs something. So the Chamberlain, again, south of 66th Street on Richfield Parkway. The difference between, between providing a new efficiency unit at 50% AMI and a new two-bedroom unit is $113,000 per unit. So staff recommendation, I think last time we talked about a proportionality. So require, and that's what Spark requires in their policy, is that, you know, a proportion, the affordable unit should be a similar mix of bedroom sizes as the building as a whole. Actually, we are certainly against that idea, because in part, I think the Link 65 project that you recently approved, HRA recently approved at 65th and Lyndale, they were able to get 10 two-bedroom units. If instead we applied a proportionality to that, that wouldn't have been, wouldn't have been as valuable to us as those, having all of them be two-bedrooms, but to provide fewer of them. So I think that we would like, you know, direction to allow us to come up with some language that would give us some flexibility to work as hard as we can to get more, as many large units as we can, recognizing that it might be better to accept fewer, but larger units. So, you know, and then just to put you on notice that, you know, we may need to consider adding resources in order to accomplish this. So you know, some projects maybe can, can make that work. Some projects are going to struggle with that. So, you know, again, that's where, you know, that pooled TIF would really, really be helpful if that were flexible. So again, we'll keep working on that. So yeah, I think that's what I had to say about those, so if there's any question. You know, and that's, you know, getting some direction on what's more important, or deeply affordable or larger units. It's really hard to, several of the comments I received were, you know, we don't want to make priorities. It's all a priority. Unfortunately, there's only so many resources to go around. So if there are choices to sort of understand maybe where you all are coming from in terms of what do you think priorities are?
All right, are there questions or comments that people would like to give? And again, I can't see everybody, so if I don't call in, you, your hands up, just put it in. All right, Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Chair Supple. Um, two questions. It seems every time we have a housing conversation, I'm still learning new things about exactly how TIF work, our primary source of funding. Is this something, I guess, for the deeper affordability, one proposal, which I know still has limitations at the state level, is to require a lower number of units? Is that something we can do with bedroom size of say, hey, we expect 20% at, at 50% if it's housing, or 60% if it's redevelopment? But if you're willing to make them two-bedroom or larger, we would lower that to 15 or 18%. Is that something that is possible? And then the other question that I'm even less certain if it's possible with TIF, I know we frequently, and there's, there's many other reasons for this, we frequently do not max out the length of time or the dollar amount of TIF that we offer. Would it be feasible to say, like, if they are wanting to build larger units in order to make that pan out financially, we might make the TIF district plan on it lasting 17 years instead of 15, or something like that? Or is that not, does that mess up the but for analysis?
So I guess I'll answer the first part of the question, and that's in a redevelopment district, we would have that flexibility. In a housing district, absent changing the legislation, we would not. But John, did you want to take on the second part of Ben's question?
Yeah, so the question is, can we tell a developer, you know, as it stands, you're getting $3 million of increment in 15 years to do the minimum requirements. However, we would give you an additional X amount of increment in years 16, 17, and 18, or whatever, to add more large bedrooms. And that is something we have explored on projects. As we've talked about, for a developer, one of the issues is not only the amount of money, but when the money comes in. And that's really the issue there, is if we, if we increase the amount of increment we're giving them, it's almost certainly going to be at the tail end of the district. And that's harder for them to build into their financing. And we would have to put a, a pretty high inflation rate on it that far out, and it would really drive the number up. So I wouldn't say it's impossible. It is something we can, that we have explored and we will continue to explore.
Other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? I, I would say it would be nice, we've talked about this with housing, about having families be able to move up and not have to leave Richfield. I think the same is true, whether it's a house or an apartment. You want a place to go as your family is growing. And so I think the fact that we're encouraging it, if we could figure out a way to get the legislature to help us, that would be wonderful. And if, is there a bill in process? I guess that's my question. Is there a bill to go for some of these things that we're asking for?
Not this year that I'm aware of. We decided to focus our efforts on getting that pooled TIF some flexibility. Let us use that in a different way. But so changing the tax increment statute, we aren't working on this year. I think we were advised with the pandemic that there, there just would be limited. You know, and we sort of focus our efforts.
All right, thank you. Are there anybody, is there anyone else who has a question? All right, and actually, we're kind of right on schedule here, so we're going to move on to accessibility.
Excellent, all right. So accessibility, you got some comments about that too. Currently, the policy doesn't have any requirements. Like I said, we have just informally negotiated for some units. So our goal here is, of course, to increase the number of apartments that are accessible to people with physical disabilities, because so much of our. because so much of our housing stock is built, our apartments were built in the 1960s. Pre, their garden levels, you walk in the door and you immediately face stairs, right? So they can't even be modified in a reasonable way. So really, creating new is our best way for this kind of housing. So I got a lot of feedback from folks on this, it's just that there's a really high need, it can only be achieved through new construction. Wanting a variety of sizes, there was a push that any project with at least four units should have an accessible unit. As Chair Supple pointed out, they need to be both affordable and accessible. And then just pointing out that, so there's a discussion between type A versus ADA accessible. And that type A means it's sort of accessible ready, it doesn't have the grab bars, it's, you know, it's missing some of the stuff. But you can request accommodation, but folks didn't feel that landlords typically pay for those accommodations. So again, the issue here, one of the issues is just that that difference between type A unit and ADA accessible unit. And so some of the differences with an ADA accessible is it has the grab bars, it has the sink, the cabinets under the sinks removed, so you could go under it with a chair. You have different requirements for stove, has to have front controls, you have to have a side-by-side refrigerator. The hood fan has to have a switch that's reachable from a wheelchair. You have to have more kitchen cabinets that, on the lower level, the upper cabinets just aren't useful at all, right? And so you have to take up more space to provide that kind of units, you know? And if you're really nice, you provide the pullouts, right? And all those things do have some costs, although they are not nearly as substantial as providing the more deeply affordable and the bedroom sizes. So some of the numbers that I had come up with, which our DAP disputes, but really the numbers are small, that I don't. You know, if they want to argue that it doesn't cost anymore to go from type A to ADA accessible, that's fine. The numbers that I got from a couple of different architects were it's between $4,000 to $6,000, and it has to do with some extra square footage that has to be provided to be ADA accessible, and then all those different things that I just mentioned. So, so whether we use a, I use just an average of 5,000 or a minimal cost, it's not significant. I would point out that it would be more significant in smaller projects. And so when, I know some of you had talked with the Chamberlain developers, and they said, well, it was really no big deal to provide more type A units, which they have to provide 5% type A versus 2% is the standard. And they provided 5% because of their HUD financing. And so for a project that's $42 million, providing 15 units, even if it was a cost of $5,000, is really not substantial at all. A smaller project, the costs could start to add up, and if it is a space difference, then that also could add some costs. So I didn't provide accessibility data before, I don't believe, and I thought this could be helpful, because it sort of drives a little bit what our recommendation is. But, well, some of this, sorry, I did provide in that document I mentioned earlier. But so we have approximately 5,300 apartment units. You know, 13% of those are rentals for seniors and are people with disabilities, and they have elevators and some accessibility features. Senior buildings have different standards. We've had about 599 non-restricted units built since 87, and so they would have elevators since 1987. About 585 of those have been built since 2000. That would have an elevator and type, 2% type A units, which is the ADA requirements. And then just some numbers, you know, just under 11% of people in Minnesota have a disability. And 5% of that, those with those disabilities are ambulatory issues or physical issues. And then Richfield is very similar in that we have 10% of people in Richfield have a disability, and a little over 5% of those are ambulatory issues. And then just to point out, about 37% of those are under 65 years old. So, you know, some of those folks with disabilities are seniors and very likely living in your buildings with appropriate accessibility features. So, you know, staff, it's recommendation, we like the 5%, given that it's consistent with, first of all, the number, the data, and then just also, it's very similar to what HUD requires, right? I believe the Minnesota housing requirement is 3%. I didn't get confirmation of that before the meeting, but anyway, I think 5% is something that a developer would be used to seeing, again, from HUD. Our thought would be to allow sort of flexibility between type A and accessible, if we can get fully accessible. That would be our goal. But we, again, you know, we always like to have a little flexibility, again, recognizing that projects vary. We would encourage a mix of bedroom sizes, but again, maybe we don't require it, because maybe we could get them all to be two bedrooms, or. You know, although that may or may not be preferred in terms of accessibility. I think the other thing we could do is maybe explore creating a fund to pay for accommodations. So if we ended up with type A units, you know, maybe there's also a fund available for folks to pay for those grab bars and other things that might be needed to make a unit fully accessible for someone in a wheelchair. Again, I think we want to also tie it to affordability. Unless they're paying the 50%, 15% in lieu fee, and I would argue, we would argue that to not let people opt out of the accessibility requirement, even if they're paying the in lieu fee, again, because the cost is so minimal, we just don't see it as an issue, especially at a 5%. So, and then the other thing is that we talked about adding a building permit fee reduction for accessible units. As we know, we passed that maybe three years ago, so there is a building permit fee reduction, and we want to take a look at that to sort of recognize, and it's not a huge incentive, but I think it can help, and is a way to help incentivize folks, again, like maybe doing fully accessible, because you're going to get a building permit fee reduction. So, yeah, if you have questions about that or comments, and I think you all know, got feedback on this as well, that our DAP was pushing for 15%, I think it's 15% type A, and it's a 5% accessible. I had a flurry of emails today, so I could be misquoting that.
All right, Commissioner Reese Daniels. I believe you're still muted.
Thank you, I switched versions of Cisco. So I believe that the need for flexibility, I think that's, I understand the need for that. But how often do you think we're just going to end up with a type A and not really get any accessible units? Which, as I hear the differences between them, I wonder how much this is going to actually be impactful.
You mean a type A unit doesn't really help? I mean, the type A unit does have the wider doorways, it has a roll-in shower. I mean, that was a comment that we heard a lot, too, the roll-in shower piece. And normally, you just have to provide one roll-in shower of your type As, but, you know, we could bunk that up. So I think the type A does provide. Does provide something, yeah.
Other questions? Councilmember Whalen?
Um, I don't know how to put this nicely, that's just not true. Neither the accessible unit or the type A unit in state code request a roll-in shower. And that was actually what I was going to comment on, is that what I heard, what I heard from our DAP, and I've heard before, even like two years ago, Lee Onasors, who some of you know, was part of, wasn't silly as part of the housing team, and started raising this issue that roll-in showers are one of the, like, biggest pieces that are hard to find, and there's currently no requirement for them. It's optional, you can do in a type A unit, you can do a bathtub in a type, in a accessible unit, you can do a bathtub with grab bars and a seat, but it's still not required to have a zero threshold shower. And that is, by far, certainly in talking with our DAP, I know Lee has talked about this before, that that would make a bigger difference. A unit with a roll-in shower than a fully accessible unit, if that cost difference is the deciding factor. But I agree that the, with this, the cost being minimal, that we should, I'm happy to see that we're doing this, but this is unfortunately not common at all. And so absolutely, we need to be leading on this and encouraging other cities to start leading on this too. But I think, and I don't, I don't know if this, I think it'd be great if this could be a requirement, certainly something we encourage, but to make sure that whatever version of accessible the 5% are, that they include roll-in showers and are advertised as accessible units.
Thank you, that's, so first of all, our building official does require a roll-in shower, so that's his read of it. But I can double-check that with him, but that's my understanding, so. But I don't want to quibble about that, I agree that roll-in showers are important, and I think we can incorporate that, certainly. And then I just lost, what was my other thought? It's gone, sorry.
Are there other questions or comments? Executive Director Stark?
Well, I would just add, and this applies to both accessible housing and affordable housing, that the regulation part of it is a big piece. But Richfield historically has been very successful on the incentivizing aspect of things. And I don't want us to lose track of that on either affordable housing or accessible housing. We do, I think we do as well or better than anybody in terms of, like, our Kids at Home program, in incentivizing or assisting folks. And I think that we should continue to look into whether there are other options there. And I think that is especially true on this accessibility issue. I think there's a lot we can do in terms of incentivization instead of regulation. And that building permit fee reduction, for example, you know, maybe that's somewhere where we specifically look at roll-in showers. If a developer provides a roll-in shower and shows us the cost of that, you know, we can come up with a reduction just for that item. And it really allows us to tailor some of our priorities in that way. So again, just don't lose sight of that as an option.
Well, I'll give you another example, too, the developer who was looking at doing a tax credit project on the City Garage South site, which is, what, 77th and Pillsbury? And he keeps, he's revisited that idea. Unfortunately, the funding priorities have changed, and that site would not score well for 9% tax credits. So he looks at 4% tax credits, which are 60% AMI. And he says, you know, how would that go over? It's like, well, we really like that mix. And I said, but maybe you could help us meet some of our other goals. Could you provide larger units, and/or could you provide more type A and accessible units? And his immediate answer was yes. So that might be an example where, okay, if you're willing to accept all at 60%, but we can make some of these other goals happen, especially accessibility, you know, would that be a positive? And my first response was, yeah, I think it would be.
All right, we've only got about a minute or so left here, is there anyone else that wants to speak on this topic? I would echo Councilmember Whalen's thing about the roll-in or the low threshold showers. Because I think that that makes a big deal, or a big difference, and I've heard about that from a lot of people. And I do like some of the last few bullet points here, where you've talked about ways to incentivize and to link the affordability with the accessibility. So I think that's important. So is there anything else? All right, then we'll move on to the length of affordability, we're only going to give this one about five minutes.
So currently, what we say is that affordability must be maintained for the length of the tax increment district for at least a minimum of 10 years. And so again, our goal at this point is, you know, we want to maintain affordability over a period of time that's consistent with the amount of financial assistance being provided. And I think this is, normally, our TIF districts have always lasted almost the full 25 years. We consider it a pretty big deal if we can get them, you know, done in 23, maybe. But the last couple of projects have suggested that they may be done in as quickly as 12 years. And so there may be some concern that is 12 really long enough, given the assistance that's provided. Some of the issues that raises is just that we lose that stick. Currently, if they don't meet the income requirements, you know, we withhold the TIF. And if that's not there, our solution is to sue them. I talked to Edina about what they're doing in their policy, they don't link it to TIF, so they don't have a stick to hold over them. And she said, public shaming is kind of her best option, and that's not a good one. She does have some projects that are not in compliance, so. So those are those issues. You know, we recognize the need to go beyond 10, and, but there is, you know, that compliance issue, and we'd need to do a little bit more work on that, you know, what options we might have. Suing is not a good option, it's costly, and we don't necessarily win. So, yeah, our thought is that we could increase to 15 years. And we'll do our best with compliance, again, doing a little bit more work on that. So, you know, lengthening it. Yeah, I guess that's, that's all I have to say about that.
All right, is there feedback on that recommendation? Whoops, I saw thumbs up, is there anyone wishing to speak? All right, so I think we'll move on then to the part that has to do with whether it should be an ordinance versus a policy.
Okay, so currently, it's a policy, and the feedback we've received is some folks feel that new development without any affordability is just not worth it. That, you know, new market rate development doesn't help affordable. We did hear from some of you last time that if we did move to an ordinance, we shouldn't just tie it to a PUD, because we don't want to discourage that creativity. The answer, if we did want to move to an ordinance, is that we could probably tie it to a rezoning and/or a comp plan amendment. It would point out that the two projects that have happened without city assistance, so to which ordinance would have applied, were the Novo, which is over at 66th and Queen, and the Lunds project at the crosstown in Penn. But neither of those required a rezoning or a comp plan amendment. So having that trigger would not kick in the ordinance. Another option is to use, just apply it to all new construction, and that is what Bloomington does. City attorney is a little less sure of that, that it's untested, that could get challenged in court. We often like to sit back and let another city get challenged first, and let them deal with that, because, yeah. So we'll see, I mean, so far, Bloomington hasn't. I would point out that while Bloomington applies it to new construction, their requirement is only 9%. Take a look at the chart if you decided to go in this ordinance route. And we did hear from some of you last time that, you know, you would be concerned, would that inhibit new development? And I think the answer is it certainly could. It certainly also could lead to more requests for TIF. I think both the Novo and the Lunds project are going to be immediately on the tax rolls, and that has a really big positive effect in our community. And so, in staff's opinion, moving to an ordinance could inhibit some of those other positives and goals that we work towards, like tax-based diversification. So again, that another issue is compliance, when there is a TIF being collected. And, you know, the opposite issue is that an ordinance would perhaps allow for a longer period of time. So our recommendation is to keep it as a policy and make the changes like we're talking about tonight. And again, just want to point out that why we recommend that is just the legal unknown, it's the issue of compliance. Benefits, market rate developments do have benefits, and there is some question of whether, you know, the units filter down to others, but I, you know, so we can debate that. Or I would point out, I do feel like having more market rate developments in Richfield does take some pressure off converting existing. does take some pressure off converting existing no housing. So I don't have a study to back that up, but it just, I'm going to say that I think that that is the case. So, you know, if you do want to go in this direction, I guess we would like to maybe set this one separately. Because we'd need to do a lot more work on figuring out compliance.
All right. Are there any comments or feedback on this section? All right. Member Hayford, Larry.
Thank you. I just want to say I strongly support keeping this as a policy that applies to subsidized buildings only at this time, mainly because, you know, this is largely a game of numbers. As you know, Julie mentioned, there's only two example projects that are fully market rate. I, I don't want to create disincentives to that. And I don't want to drive more projects to TIF than necessary. I'd rather we save our public dollars and get the, you know, biggest bang for our buck in those projects that we can. So I, I want to keep it this way, you know, unless things change a lot in the foreseeable future of getting a ton more market rate units and us seeing, you know, only luxury housing and no affordable housing getting built. I think I'd be happy to revisit it. But I am hoping that we, after we close out this and we hopefully have consensus this policy, that we go and look at our zoning code and look at other issues related to housing affordability. Cause I think the reality is that our zoning code structurally makes housing less affordable than it could be. I'm particularly concerned about the fact that we require minimum, you know, minimum parking. I've certainly mentioned that before. People have heard that from me. But it's, you know, 30% of the cost of the building. And I, I don't know that that's defensible. I don't know that that's really good for affordable housing goals or make it, making market rate units more affordable. I also really worry about how much we limit where new housing can go and thus new affordable housing. This is just, you know, it's a little bit of an aside, but it's one very tangible example. I was recently at a meeting talking about the orange line, the new Bus Rapid Transit line. And I found out that we are the only city that has an orange line station that prohibits the construction of new high density housing around that transit station. But I think that's exactly the kind of area where we want to see new housing go, new high density housing go, new affordable housing go. So we have work to do. I, I don't think applying this to market rate is a good answer, but I think we could do a lot to make housing more affordable. And I hope we continue that conversation after tonight's topic. But I agree with, with staff to be concise in this recommendation.
All right. Are there additional questions, feedback or comments? Thank you. I guess then we'll move on to the in lieu of fee discussion.
So currently in lieu fee, if you'd opt not to provide the units in a development, you pay 15% of the tax increment into our housing redevelopment fund. You know, and the goal is again, to provide some flexibility for developments, but also to provide a revenue source for the, the housing redevelopment fund. And also just to recognize in some cases, it's, it's, it's complicated to do and expensive to do redevelopment in Richfield. And there may be extraordinary costs that just make it more infeasible for the project to be able to include affordable units. So again, offering that flexibility to help move projects forward. The feedback we received is just that in lieu fee, people wanting that to be comparable to the cost of building a new unit elsewhere. It would have to be significantly more than 15%, but you know, that 50% is, is the max you can pull by state law. And providing it separately as cash upfront would be a, a challenge for developments to still cash flow and be able to do that. So we're recommending no change in this. And again, we're, we're going at it from a different perspective and trying to get some flexibility for existing pools TIF. So we just, we don't believe that the Richfield market is strong enough at this point to, to be able to, to require more. You know, and I would just point out that the 15%, we use it to leverage units elsewhere. So for an example, we're estimating that we're going to be collecting about $800,000 from the enclave. We spent about $490,000 to purchase 6501 Penn. And our hope is that we're going to end up with 89 income restricted units at 6501 Penn. And the 812 units actually are $812,000 represents a loss of 22 units that the enclave might have provided. So, so there we're getting more per dollars. And, and so to think of it as leverage, I think can be helpful.
I see in the chat that Executive Director Stark wanted to add something and also Commissioner Reese Daniels. Go ahead.
Yep. Just really quickly on the in lieu fee. Having it exceed the 15%, at 15%, we understand that the tax increment, the pool tax increment is the most likely source. When we talk about exceeding that, then we start asking ourselves, what are, what are the sources of doing that? If the developer, we, we can't charge more than 15% for pooling, the developer could utilize their portion of the increment to pay an additional in lieu fee. But that would require the TIF district to be lengthened, to provide that amount of money. And that has some negative connotations with it. If the developer is going to bring other assets or other capital to the project, I just want to remind you what, how the but for analysis works in a TIF district. What essentially what the but for analysis says is that this particular development with 100 units of market rate housing and 15% and 15 units of affordable housing with all the costs associated could not happen but for the exact amount of increment that the HRA is pledging. So if the HRA is pledging, if the developer asks for a million dollars in increment and we do the calculations and say, no, with a million dollars of increment, you would have a return on investment that exceeds what the market norm is. And so we're not going to give you the $2 million you asked for. We're going to look at the return on investment, which is customary and back into the TIF number. So we might say you're going to get a million dollars worth of TIF to get the return on investment that is that's required. If then we say, we'd like you to identify some additional sources of funding to pay more in lieu, that gives us some problem in the but for analysis in that we have to show that now as a source of funding into the project. And if they're bringing additional funds into the project, then they need that much less increment. And so it's kind of a catch 22 with the way the but for analysis works in a TIF district. That really is kind of de-motivational to finding a way to push that number up. So I, I know that's kind of wonky and maybe I didn't explain it well, but it is very complex to go through that. And we have not, we've worked with Ellers and we've worked with Kennedy and Graven. And we really haven't seen a good way of pushing the in lieu past the 15% without having some unintended consequences.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Reese Daniels?
I was just saying, I've, I've never really been a fan of the in lieu fee. I think fundamentally, I hate the idea that someone can buy their way out of providing affordable housing. But it is really helpful to hear the things that we are doing with that money. And so those conversations and keep reminding us all the things is really beneficial. And I just want to make sure we are still talking about that every time this comes up. So thank you.
Are there other comments, questions, feedback? I do want to keep trying to tie things together. And I do think that you shouldn't be exempt from doing, say, the accessibility requirements if you choose to pay that. And then I think I saw Councilmember Wayland's hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah. To Commissioner Reese Daniel's comment, I, I think is exactly where my, my head is at. And that I think it is, it is good every time we discuss this to hear like, what does that money then do? And how is it leveraging other units? And so I, I guess I'm maybe, maybe this is hard to answer. Are we like, if we, well, for example, the, the link 65 on 65th and Lyndale that just got approved, it's going to have some in lieu payment and some affordable unit. When we get, and I mean, the money's not in our accounts yet. There's still a lot of things that could happen, but when we get that, is that, are we at a place where we're needing to pay off prior commitments? Or is every time we get a new in lieu payment, open up possibilities for the future?
Well, I would say we have ongoing programming of various types. Right now, the existing pooled TIF we have coming in is enough to continue to pay for the, for that programming. When things like the Best Buy TIF district get decertified though, we will lose a fair number of funding sources. And so future projects, their pooled monies may have to go to backfill what we were getting from Best Buy and other projects that are decertifying in other, in order for those programs to continue.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Then we're going to move on to the size of the project and we're only five minutes behind here. So I think we'll make it.
Okay. I'll speed up here. So the current policy is if something's five units or more, it, the policy applies. The one feedback piece we got was just the accessibility. People felt that if it's four units, it should have an accessible unit. So the issues again, compliance is onerous on a small development. TIF is not generally available to assist on some of those small projects. You know, a reduction in the price of the land, if it's a city-owned property, isn't always enough. And just concerned that it discourages small infill projects. And I had a question from one of you earlier today and, and just explained that what we've been using, what has triggered these thoughts is as we increase some of these requirements, you know, so maybe the policy is, is, has been fine for a five unit project. But when you add all these new requirements, it just adds a greater burden on those smaller projects. And, and the example we use is the Roundabout Parcel, which is that parcel behind TNT on Portland and 66th Street. And it's been really challenging to find a feasible development for that site. Most likely whatever we end up with there will be affordable, but then to make them take the extra step of doing income compliance is a challenge. And do we really want to have that be vacant if we can't get something to work? To create a TIF district there, it costs $20,000 to $30,000 just to set up a district. And then does it even generate enough? And we can't use housing redevelopment fund money there because it's a vacant piece of property. There's no blight on it. So, so that was the, that is the example we use when we, we think through is five units, given all these new requirements, is that an appropriate number? And that is the smallest of any of the area policies. Couple of them have 10 units as the minimum and others have 20. And our recommendation is, is again, with all these new requirements to bump it up to 20 as the minimum. And again, you know, if we had resources, we're happy to try to get affordability on a smaller project. It just is, it's a challenge. You know, the accessibility piece might be something we can certainly do at a smaller number. But then we have to talk about, you know, different rules for different sized projects. It just becomes a little complicated, but we could make that work.
All right. Are there questions, comments? Councilmember Hayford, Larry?
I just want to clarify because, you know, we talked about this only applying to subsidized projects. And staff previously mentioned that our main tool to subsidize is TIF. So I guess I'm wondering, who are we tempting if we can't use a TIF district?
Also like in the case of the Roundabout, if we were to sell that at less than its approved, appraised value.
Got it. That makes sense. And we're specifically talking about the, the affordability requirements or also waiving the accessibility requirements.
Well, I'm suggesting, staff is suggesting that we switch the IHP to only be projects that are at least 20 units. So it would no longer apply, but an option would be to create a tiered system. Something between five and 20 units has a lower threshold that it needs to meet. And accessibility could be one of those pieces.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there additional comments, questions, feedback? Councilmember Wayland?
Do we, do we have any examples of this size projects that have happened in the last 10 years? Or is it so difficult that we haven't had any?
Julie, the, what about the Sheridan?
That, that's what I was thinking of. I'm trying to decide if that would count as our scattered, under scattered site or or this, probably could have argued it either way. We would have, we would, we would have met the policy. We were able to come up with, there was significant assistance that went into that to make that happen.
And that's the one on Sheridan and about 77th or 76th?
76. Yes. Thank you. I, I mean, they're, they're rare. It's true. Again, the Roundabout Parcel is what, what sticks in our head, but we, we have a couple of other smaller areas too, smaller parcels that we own.
I would just add that the small projects, the smaller they are, the harder they are, period. Just from a, a critical mass standpoint. You know, to have to manage a smaller development, you know, to staff it, you're spreading those staffing costs out among fewer units. Oh, the construction, you know, you're not getting any, you know, volume discount on any construction materials. So the, the smaller projects, again, and again, and again, whether it's Emerson Lane or the Sheridan project we've talked about, or a lot of others that we haven't been able to figure out how to get them to work, have proven themselves to be very difficult.
All right. So any last comments before we move on to replacement? All right. We've got about five minutes for that before we start wrapping up.
So the current policy says that if a non-housing development removes affordable housing, they must replace that affordable housing and/or make a payment in lieu from the tax increment. So obviously the goal here is that we're trying to prevent the loss of affordable housing. You know, we're trying to get a gain with this policy, not, not a loss. So the issues with that is, you know, requiring a, a straight in that requirement, sorry, let me back up. The proposal has been to change that requirement to be all development. Any development that comes in that removes affordable housing would be required to provide a replacement. And you know, some of the challenges are that it's very costly to provide replacement units at the same rents that are collected in an old, most likely a substandard building, because that's typically what might go if, if that were to happen. And then also there are maybe instances where the comp plan is guiding the property to be non-residential. And so then we're putting them, something in the way of that. But you know, staff sees that, you know, we certainly can apply it to housing developments as well. But again, it would be, we would suggest it be at the differential between the lost number of units and the number of units that are being provided. And we would like, again, that flexibility of, by maintaining the in lieu payment option. The Henley Two, which is located at 64th and Lyndale is an example of that. They are removing some duplexes and single family homes that are very likely affordable, but they are replacing it more than replacing that. Well, barely replacing it actually because of the new units are, are five units, right? Five new units, whereas they're preserving the 22 unit building. So, so it's an example of every project is different. It's hard to predict and know what, what's going to come up. But changing the policy would have applied and would have worked with the Henley Two.
Are there questions, comments or feedbacks, feedback on the replacement of affordable housing? All right. Commissioner Reese Daniels, go ahead.
Yeah, I always understood this, maybe clearly I'm wrong in that if you are losing it, you have to add that on top of the 15%. So if we're giving TIF money, right, the, or whatever the, the rate would be otherwise, aren't we just losing more or keeping the exact same amount of affordable housing and not actually gaining any? I, I feel like to me, this ordinance or not ordinance, but this recommendation, this policy recommendation is really important to keep out there. So we don't just get rid of or replace and lose our sheer volume of numbers if we're, if it's not a one for one plus whatever is needed due to requirements.
Well, I would say you're right. And the way this is worded. And in terms of volume, it is one for one. In terms of quality, that's where we're looking at it. It's, it's replacing a unit with a higher quality unit. It's um, it's replacing a unit with a higher quality unit. Um, ideally, um, but we would certainly be open um, to looking at this differently.
Other comments, questions? All right, um, Councilmember Whalen?
Um, I feel like I'm talking a lot, so um, but people know I care a lot about this. I think this absolutely makes sense to uh, at the very least, have at least one-for-one replacement. Can you, I think that's what we're saying here, um, but I guess, can you explain the word differential, what you mean by that?
It. So, yeah, we probably made it more confusing than it needed to be. Um, I'm trying to think of an example. So, so like the Henley, I guess, took out five units. Um, I don't know that they were all rentals, but um, I think four were, so they took out four rental units. Yeah, so they, they basically have to put back four, not sort of replace four and then apply the inclusionary housing policy. I guess that's what we're saying, but Commissioner Vries Daniels is suggesting that that's, that's not quite enough. She, she likes the idea of, okay, you got to replace what you took out and also create.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, in terms of like the. 20% um, affordable at 60% uh, that if, that, that's the minimum. Uh, so if somebody, if a project had 15% affordable. And um, a developer came in to replace it and said, well, wait, I'm replacing the 15% affordable, I'm done. Our answer is no, uh, there's an additional 5% you have to do to meet the inclusionary housing policy. And again, I, when, the way staff looks at this policy is this is the floor, it's the bare minimum. Um, we're always going to advocate for more, we're always going to um, delve into the numbers to see if a developer can provide more. Uh, we're always, and I think you'll see, you've seen this like on the Enclave or Link 65 project and uh, other projects that have come to you recently. We're always going to explain to you the analysis that we've done uh, to push for more. And we, at the end of the day, we want you to believe that um, staff didn't leave any stone unturned. And that we've given you, given you enough evidence uh, to make you comfortable in that belief.
Are there any additional comments or feedback on that? Um, Housing Manager Urban, are you go through the couple of slides with the feedback?
Yep, I can run through that quickly.
Do is have, allow policymakers to give some final thoughts and kind of wrap things up. Okay, so um, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, did you want to chime in now or after the feedback?
I can wait after, thank you.
Go quickly. Uh, just a couple of these points I thought were helpful. Um, you know, I heard from some folks that. Our existing buildings are in poor shape, but a lot of times those smaller landlords and building owners offer greater flexibility. And unfortunately, a lot of folks put up with poor conditions for that flexibility. So you'll see when we get to priorities that preserving didn't necessarily make it high on the list of priority. But I just really want to reinforce that preserving and improving our existing affordable housing is still, it has been our priority for 20 years. And I think it continues to be that. Um, you know, the just really a need for lower rent, um, folks wanting support, you know, not just a place to live, but a, a community and how to provide that community. And so supportive services to some folks doesn't mean a social worker necessarily. It, it means homework help or um, you know, other moms who are in similar situations that can relate to, to challenges of distance learning, et cetera. Um, a lot of the requirements, things like social uh, security deposits and um, make it difficult to get into those new buildings. Again, more buildings, I talked about this, the need for more bedrooms, um, that teenager example. Um, people just wanting to base our policy on our community needs. And some, some strong support for putting financial resources towards affordable and accessible housing. And I, we talked about the accessibility feedback um, already, I think. Um, I think I've already covered that. So I put out this survey and it was really a survey, it wasn't meant to be quantitative at all. It was qualitative and an opportunity for folks to sort of express some views. And so I asked them to prioritize these different topics that we talked about. And so I just point out that the highest number of ones and twos, um, the more deeply affordable units got the highest number, followed by larger units and then supportive housing. Preserving existing, and then the idea of having more units, but at a higher rent threshold, that got the lowest number of high priorities. And then the low priority winners were, were almost um, a mirror image, not quite. Um, some of the just general comments I received, again, other priorities than what were mentioned, but the idea of accessible housing. Providing up the options throughout the community, not segregated, not on the edges, not on, you know, stuck out on 494 by itself. Um, some folks say we want, should focus more on affordable, single-family housing, putting housing on bus lines. Uh, some folks express support for a mix of affordable and market rate in a building. Energy efficiency, again, how, how that can improve affordability and we are working on some efforts in that direction. Affordable commercial came up, people wanted rent increases to, to be capped. Um, that really is um, challenging for families when rents go up more than a minimal amount. Um, there were also comments that we should focus less on affordable housing and more in bringing in restaurant shops that people want to visit. People wanted more market rate apartments, not affordable. Um, people suggested building simpler new housing, single-level townhomes, which is of course something we've heard for many years, that showed up. And then jobs first was an interesting comment I just dropped there, I thought that was interesting. Um, you know, folks need decent paying jobs in order to afford housing. Some of the general concerns is that other cities need to also provide their fair share of housing, affordable housing. Um, state and federal resources are needed, we don't want a greater tax burden. Um, crime gets brought up, whether that's perception or reality, um, we can certainly have a long conversation about. Um, people are concerned that the amount of affordable housing is in decline, uh, need for affordable senior housing. Uh, again, that integration issue. And I thought this was just in a, a comment that was um, stuck out to me, that essential workers, we've heard a lot about that during the pandemic, right? They need places to live, we've talked about how important our grocery store workers are during this time and they need places to live. And then of course, the comments that um, um, we really should not get involved in this and just let the market determine. So that was a quick, um, just some feedback, I thought a lot of it was really interesting. I appreciate that folks took the time to express their views. And um, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, if you want to go next.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. My comments are more general with all the different um, suggestions that were made versus any one of the items. I, I think I have a difficulty personally kind of diving in super deep to any one tool. Because I kind, for me, it's helpful for me to think, you know, uh, look at the big picture. And, and I think we've been doing that as, as staff and a community and, and council and HRA. But you know, how can we make sure that the tools we do have, you know, we're saying to developers, listen, if you're coming to Richfield, you're going to. Advance our accessibility goals and/or affordability and/or, you know, these, these values and goals that we have. And I think they were really outlined well and what um, some of what Judy just, or Judy, sorry, uh, Julie just shared now. Um, but you know, there's clearly a need for, for work at the state level. And, and I'm just wondering, you know, how can we push that more? Um, and I'm just thinking, where can we put our biggest bang for our buck around accessibility and affordability in the mix across the community? And where we know we can actually, you know, achieve these goals, whether it is deeper affordability and say, these are the key areas. Um, and if you're coming to Richfield, you know, we need you to be advancing this. It may be at all of them, it may be a mix, here's the tools we have to help, here's the incentives. Um, but it is a very tough issue and, and I guess my comments are not so much on those, each of those specific things. But like, where can we really concentrate to make sure that we are meeting, you know, those. Those um, that, those needs that we have. So I appreciate the work that staff is doing and the advocates and, and everybody on the call. Um, it's a very tough issue, that's the way that I'm, I'm thinking about it.
All right, thank you. So we have about 10 minutes before the HRA meeting starts. Um. And I'm, don't know if you want to, if someone wants to try and summarize and recap, or if somebody wants to add their final thoughts. Or how we want to um, close this out. And while you're mulling that over, I do want to also thank all of the community members that provided feedback. We got lots and lots of feedback from a lot of people. So thank you for everybody who gave their feedback and also from all the people that spoke here tonight and all the staff that's been working on this. So I guess the question is, how do we wrap this up in the next 10 minutes?
Well, I think, I, I think that there are some issues that there is agreement. Um. Uh, exactly which issues those are, I'm not sure. But, you know, I would, I'd like to, I'd like to see some progress made on this. Uh, we could keep coming back every six months and having the same conversation over and over again. Um, but I would like to take some of the low-hanging fruit off of the conversation. So between Julie and I and Katie, as we've listened to you. I think we are going to come up with a list of things that we think that there's consensus on. And maybe the two or three things that there isn't consensus on. Uh, we'll come back to the policymakers in March, uh, or maybe the first week of April.
John, the next work session would be April.
No, yeah, I'm sorry, with the things that there is consensus on.
Oh, bring it actually in a, okay.
We would bring it as an item.
Item, okay, not another work session, thank you.
Right, in March or early April.
Got it.
The, the two or three things for which there is not consensus, uh, we'll work on scheduling a work session. Um, Katie's uh, pretty uh, well-scheduled out for the future for work sessions, so we'll have to see where that would fit in. Uh, but that's how I would recommend moving forward.
Is there a reaction to that or thoughts? Um, Councilmember Whalen, go ahead.
Um, I think that sounds great. I think uh, to Julie's, I think it was Julie's point, someone's point. Um, I, that preservation uh, I think is worth continuing to talk about. Um, I don't know that that needs a whole work session, um, if that's just a memo. But I, I appreciate the deep dive on this, but also um, because of the pandemic delaying everything, it's now been a, a year mostly focused on this. And so I think um, moving on to additional tools would be helpful as well. The one piece I, I guess I would appreciate more feedback, I, I may be the only policymaker interested in this. Um, I don't know that staff responded specifically to this idea of whether it's possible. Um, but on the, the very first thing we talked about with the affordability levels, that I still think the. The biggest need and the biggest challenge is getting to that deeper affordability level. I'm curious uh, other policymakers' thoughts on moving those proposed percentages closer to what a housing TIF district requires. Um, rather than just where our um, existing policy has been. Um, and so. That we could end up with more like 10% at, 10% of units of 30% AMI. Is that something others are interested in, or is there concern that that is too uh, onerous? And would not, would lead to stopping developments entirely?
Okay, um, Councilmember Hayford Larry, go ahead.
Um, my opinion is where we're at today, I'm more comfortable with the numbers that staff recommended. If we could do things that reduce the cost of building, I would be interested in moving that up. Um, like some of the things I mentioned, I, I would like to see a higher percentage. But I also realize, um, I think Councilmember Whalen said to at least match housing TIF district. I think within our current options, if you were to do the, the least affordable option, that percentage does match the required for the housing TIF district. So unless, I don't know, I just, it, it seems like it, it disincentivizes doing the 30% if you can't go way down. I would like to see it higher, but I am really concerned about detering projects when so much of our problem has been just not enough things getting built.
All right, are there other thoughts or comments? Sue Sandall is putting in the chat, you want me to read it for you, Sue? Um, Commissioner Sandall is saying that she would prefer to follow the staff recommendations. All right, any other comments? I, I think on that one, that might be something that we're not at consensus on, but. I'm not sure exactly what the answer is on that one, that's one of the ones I'm torn on. Cause I want deeper affordability, but I don't want to make it to the point where nothing happens and then we lose even more. So, I think we need some.
Looked at keeping. So, um, Chair Supple, my suggestion on that one would be that, that we keep the policy the way it is. But that staff do a little research into incentivizing that one. Piece to say, you know, you have to do 20% at 60. However, if you could do 20% at 50, or if you could do these other things. Um, here is a way we would help incentivize that. So it'd be kind of a hybrid between a regulation and an incentive.
Okay, what do people think about that? All right, I'm seeing the thumbs up and a comment in the chat to explore the options that was just mentioned by the executive director. I think looking at a hybrid is better than doing nothing. So I would agree to look at that option. Okay, are there any other final comments? All right, well then, if there are no further comments, thank you to everyone and we'll close the work session. And in about four minutes, the HRA meeting will start. So thank you all for your time and efforts in discussion.